Good morning. We will call the December 5th, 2023 City Council Meeting to Order. You would please stand and join Councilmember Busby in the invocation of clergy.
Thank you. Let us pray. Father, I just thank you for this day. I thank you for this time. I pray that, as council members, that you would just lead, guide, and direct us to make the best decisions for the city. I thank you and find it a privilege to be able to serve this great city. In your name I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, council. All members are present and then got approval of minutes from the November 7th, 2023 City Council Meeting. The November 14th and 16th Special Call Meetings. I think those were emailed out to you all. There being no additions or corrections. They'll stand approved as read. And council, before we move forward anymore, we're going to look at, if there are no objections, we'll strike item six under first reading and we'll move that to next month so we have some more time to discuss with the residents in the area. And so then we move on. No proclamations or recognitions, invitation for public comment. I do see two that signed up to talk on item six. Since there is no item six, wait till next month to call on you. And we have Sabrina Parker to discuss item 14, new business. Oh, Ms. Parker?
Good morning. I have copies here in the event that that will be helpful for each of you. But thank you for addressing me today. Thank you, Kenny. To express concerns regarding the recent grant funding process that, and request to table the item number 14 or to reconsider the grantees within the application. It has come to our attention that there are potential ethical violations and potential conflicts of interest involved in the process of selecting grant recipients. Specifically, the scoring rubric used to evaluate application was created by an individual or am part of who have partnership contracts with the selected grantees, which demonstrates the conflict of interest. Certain potential applicants were provided the RFP at least a week in advance before other potential applicants, although interest was previously communicated. The criteria in the scoring rubric did not fully match what the grantor specified as priorities within the grant. No finalized scoring rubric has yet been presented. The scoring rubric should have been designed to focus on the grantor's specified priorities in job creation, childcare center slots created, serving low-income families, and addressing COVID prevention. The selection process violated equitable treatment of applicants in the following ways. As I mentioned, the potential conflicts of interest, and then the changing of the criteria. It appears that the scoring rubric was created and designed in favor of the selected applicants. However, if the scoring rubric was created to reflect the criteria from ECD, it would have changed the outcome of the grantees selected. Insufficient notification. Some applicants who had previously expressed interest were excluded from the RFT notification sent on October the 17th. And lack of transparency. A draft rubric was emailed on October the 24th, but we have not yet received the final scoring rubric. Many applicants reported feeling rushed, lacking guidance on the expectations. Most applicants are still unaware of how the proposal has been evaluated or scored. Transparency was lacking as the scoring rubric, sorry, was not publicized until after the public meeting where the funding was announced. Rather than rushing for approval, we urge you to ensure fairness and equitable opportunity for all. We recommend tabling this item, implementing new policies for transparent and unbiased processes, and reevaluating applications using criteria specified by the grantor. This will protect against ethical issues and restore confidence for future funding opportunities. All communities deserve open and equitable funding processes that are fair, transparent, and free from bias or undue influence. Decisions about the investment of public dollars that will impact our children and families should be made using objective criteria with stringent safeguards against even the appearance of impropriety.
Three minutes is up. It's not going off, but three-minute timer is up. Thank you so much.
I have a question I want to ask Ms. Parker before she leaves. You say on here that the scoring rubric used to evaluate applications was created by an individual who has partnership contracts with the selected grantees. Who are you talking about?
Olivia Abernacki with United Way, and those are the two selected applicants are actually partners contracted with United Way.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. All right, move on to first reading. Item one is proposed budget amendment, general fund, CDBG for a financial empowerment center in the amount of $22,000.
Motion. Second.
The motion is second. Any further discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item two is proposed budget amendment, general fund, JPD insurance recovery in the amount of $12,103.70.
Motion. Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item three, proposed ordinance to amend Title VIII, Chapter One, liquor stores.
Motion. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from council?
Yeah, I got some discussion.
Okay, all right.
Thought I was getting off easy.
Let me ask you this, Attorney Luna. You tell me, I'm going to speak and you tell me where I'm wrong. The Code Committee has a recommendation that the districts... Just tell us what the Code Committee recommended. It would be better that way.
We were here in October, a couple of months ago, with a proposal from the Code Committee, and that proposal had three categories of things in it. First category was changes that are required by state law. There's a second category that are some changes that are just cleanup. For example, it talks about the city school system in our code, and we were changing that. Some other things like drive-throughs are now allowed for liquor stores. But the main thing that has been the most of interest has to do with the liquor districts. Two months ago, when we were here, the suggestion from the Code Committee was, let's do away with the liquor districts and let's make it effective in July of 2025.
All right, you said you'd use the word suggestion. Did you mean suggestion or recommendation?
Same thing, recommendation. Now we're here making the suggestion. We have met with the liquor licensees. There are 12 of them. We've met with them, have given them an opportunity to speak and have their say. The Code Committee is now recommending that the liquor districts be done away with. You keep the same number of liquor stores at 12, but it go into effect January 1st of 2030 and that there be a two-mile radius protection zone, if you will, that will be around each of the liquor stores so that any moved or relocated, transferred liquor stores could not be within a two-mile radius of an existing liquor store.
And that could not be done under the recommendation until 2030?
Everything would stay as it is as far as liquor districts until January 1st, 2030.
Why is 2030, why is that the year instead of 29 or 31 or 32? Why? 27?
I heard all of the liquor licensees speak, and I heard the committee deliberate on this, and I don't recall that there was any special reason for 2030.
Okay, so if a, I'm going to use the term lesser valued and higher valued based upon location. Based upon the proposal, if a lesser valued liquor store wanted to move from the area that he or she is in to another area where it's a high value, the liquor store owner would not be able to do that until 2030. Is that correct?
That's correct. No one can transfer or move out of their district currently. Currently, there are six districts, two liquor stores per district. And I have this on, Kenny.
Yeah.
There it is, okay. And here are your liquor districts, and I wrote the numbers on there so you can see where they are. The problem now is that our liquor districts have gotten out of whack since 1972, and we've got some very large liquor districts and some very small ones. But I think your question is, if a liquor store licensee maybe has down here in Area 3 and they decide that they want to move their liquor store to the north, maybe to what is now Area 5. I think that's your question. When could they do that? According to this recommendation, after January 1st of 2030, but they still must fit in with all the zoning requirements, and then they must also not be within a two-mile radius of any existing liquor store.
If an entrepreneur saw an opportunity to make money in a high-value area and that person went to a, I said high value, low value. What did you call it?
Well...
You called it something else. Anyway, let me go back one point. If that person saw an opportunity and went to the lower-valued liquor store and said, I want to buy it, and sold to that person, that person who bought it still cannot move that liquor store if he or she wanted to do it until 2030.
Correct.
The reason that we did 2030 was because when, and I say we, we did not, the Code Committee, was because when they talked about the length of their notes that they had taken, and that was the desired timeline that the liquor stores asked for, to kind of give them some headway to do some things, so when these were removed, there was a buffer.
Correct. There's nothing magical about 2030. The reason for the extension was because some of the liquor store licensees said they had just recently purchased the liquor store. They had large loans. They felt like that if they were in this great, large area and only two liquor stores were there, that they had some protection from competition in being in that large area with just two liquor stores.
You bring that up, protection for competition. Is that a problem or a matter that could come back and bite the council in that someone could say that we are protecting, and it's anti-consumerism and all that kind of stuff? Could that come back?
Anyone can assert anything like that, of course, but, you know, there could be arguments on the other side as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Ms. Luna, would you show us the two-mile radius? And I just want clarification for Councilman Mr. Richard, that he said after the year 230, a liquor store still cannot move within two miles radius of a liquor store.
Correct.
So can you show us a little bit, just kind of?
I don't know that I can. I think probably Mr. Pylett could be more helpful. You do see the interstate going across this way, and you do see the bypass coming here. So that will give you some idea of how far two miles would be.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that was clear. The year 230, and then the second thing, is within a two-mile radius. It can never be within a two-mile radius.
But the point of the 2030 is to allow the ones who have purchased these stores within the last year or so, some time to recoup their major investment, because there's some large investments into their company.
We heard that from one of the liquor store owners, that there was a large loan and it was new, and he felt like if other liquor stores could move in the district where he purchased that liquor store, then it would hurt his ability to pay the loan back.
Also, Ms. Luna, even if we, whatever is done with the two-mile radius, there are still only 12 liquor stores, correct?
That's correct, and Jackson, as we've been told by the Alcohol, Alcoholic Beverage Commission, Jackson is at the top of the list in the state of Tennessee as far as number of liquor stores per capita.
At the Code... Councilman Lawrence is recognized. You had a question?
Is there any other city in the state that has districts, liquor districts?
You're exactly right. No other city in the state. When we spoke to the ABC, the representative from the state came down and met with us. We were asking, should we redistrict? Should we recommend that the districts be redistricted to get the population line? And the gentleman from the ABC laughed at us and said, you're the only city left in the state for many years that even has liquor districts anymore.
But is that a bad thing? That we have these districts? I don't see that that's a bad thing.
Councilman Donnell?
At the Code Committee meeting, were all the liquor stores represented there?
Every single one of the licensees were present.
Did they all agree with this proposal that's being set forth now? Did all of them?
They appeared to, yes.
Why is that appeared to?
Well, I will say this, that some of the liquor licensees didn't have the command of English and were relying on other people to help them understand what was going on. So that would be my only...
But I think they do understand what's about to take place because they all in business and they know it's going to affect them. And I think we need to take in consideration that they have made investments. And I think if you look at the lines, where are most of your stores located? I don't think everybody is going to go and took liquor stores out north. They still are probably going to come back in this area over here, where we can have a whole lot of liquor stores, because probably your best stores are probably located high volume or making most money is probably on this side of town, in this area. So I think, you know, we did...
The ones that were, had some English difficulties, they had an attorney representing them.
They did.
I think they understand totally what's about to take place.
This will lift the zones, but it will put ramifications in that will set some guidelines, which we've already got. You know, we can't, we don't want them beside schools. We don't want them beside churches. So all this is doing is just saying, okay, no more zones, but you cannot be within a two-mile radius, and this takes an effect 2030.
Yeah, one more thing. It's 300 feet. It used to be 100 feet, but it's 300 feet for any transferred or, you know, any new liquor stores from parks or schools or churches.
And isn't this also the same thing that's going to allow, like festivals, if we have them downtown, open where they can walk and...
That has nothing to do with the districts, but one of the changes to come in line with state law was that if, if, right now, we don't have an open container district in Jackson anywhere, and there is a provision under state law that allows festivals or events for a group to apply for a permit from the state to be able to do that for up to three days. And so the provision in the code is being changed to say no open container districts except if it's allowed by state law.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Lawrence?
Okay, we have said that, or you've said that the, we're the only city in the state that has that. As our attorney, do you know any other industry or business that we protect and do not allow competition for in Jackson?
Personally, I don't.
So this is, we think, the only one that we do not let the free market determine what goes on?
Let me go back and say there are a lot of government entity organizations that are protected that have that protection under law, but none in the free market.
Well, I think as a city, and some of our business that we have, like at the fairgrounds, at our flea market, we control what goes in and out of there. So we're protecting our city as a whole, so we need to protect our people. I don't think we even protect it. You saying protect it, I don't think that's what we're trying to do.
Councilman Wallace?
Thank you. I just want to state from the Code Committee, I'm the one that's represented on the Code Committee, and we've been doing this for two years, and I just want to make sure everybody has the facts straight. When we first came out with this, it was the year to change it to 24?
The first recommendation, which came in October, was July 1st of 2025. That's when the Code Committee originally thought that it would give enough time to the liquor stores owners in a one-mile radius. That was the original recommendation.
So the reason that we wanted to hear from the liquor store owners is we believe in compromise. We believe in making sure that everyone is treated the same. So the Code Committee went back. And, but I do want you all to understand that the Code Committee said on numerous occasions that they are just there to make a recommendation. It is the council's decision that they need to understand all the facts and take this very seriously. So I did want to just make that clear, but I do certainly believe in compromise, and I hope that we come to that because I believe that is what Jackson's about.
Councilman Stovall's next.
Thank you.
Yes, you know, I fully hear and understand what Mr. Lawrence was saying. I support capitalism and the free market, but these individuals have taken out loans based on a certain set of rules. They have businesses on a certain set of rules. And so we're voting, they were in agreement with 2030 and a two-mile radius. All 12 of them seem to be in agreement with that. So to change that now, I don't think that would be fair. I think we need to move forward with it as it is presented.
Councilman Don?
Ms. Wallace, you said, so the recommendation that we have now came from the committee?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to amend the ordinance so that we reduce the two-mile radius to a one-mile radius.
I'll second that.
There's a motion to amend, a motion to reduce the two-mile radius to a one-mile radius once the liquor districts expire in 2030. Any discussion on the motion to amend?
Yeah, I have a question to the council member. Why?
Good question. So if you look at the math that was up there, and unfortunately, we don't have a two-mile measuring stick, but from my own work, I looked at it through Google Map, and the two-mile radius doesn't really allow anyone to move, even when the changes take effect. It's essentially a moot point if you do the measurements on it. My fear there is that, you know, the existing licensees, they're essentially stuck, and they may want to relocate their business in the future, but we don't give them the opportunity to do so. Having a one-mile radius will give them more freedom, more flexibility in the future, should they choose to relocate.
Question. So if they want to relocate and do a one- or two-mile radius, they would have did it during the meeting. But they agreed to a two-mile. So why are you saying one mile and they agreed to a two mile? And these are the people that you met with?
I'm not sure that they've looked at the map the same way I have. That was my own independent work and my own independent motion for what I felt was right.
I will say there was no place in the meeting for any kind of agreement from the liquor licensees. The committee just heard from them, and then there was discussion among the committee and a motion was made and...
So the committee understood it was one or two-mile radius. Did they understand that?
The committee understood.
And they voted, and they agreed to a two-mile?
Right.
So I don't understand what's the difference.
That's a recommendation from the committee.
So they know what the map looks like?
They do.
We have a motion and a second on the table to amend from two to one-mile radius.
Mr. Chairman, I'm still in the discussion phase. If there's anybody here from the liquor store or representative, I'd like to ask that particular person why one mile is a bad idea before I vote.
Is that a map you have right there?
I think what Kenny has brought me is a map, and I think you're all getting copies of it as well, showing what the two-mile radius is.
That's two miles.
I do see that this is Highway 45 bypass running across here at the orange line. Parkway here.
This is the two-mile radius. What's the center point? Liquor stores in the center point of this map?
I'm not sure. I've just been handed the map just like you, but...
Is a representative from the liquor stores here that I wanted to ask that one question about the one mile versus two mile?
I don't know if there is a representative there.
Is there a representative out there from the liquor store? Come down with the chairman. Would you let him come down? Yeah, good morning, sir. What was your name?
Keith Davis.
Okay, Ms. Davis, you...
You say your name and the liquor store that you...
Yes, Keith Davis. I'm with CNC Wine and Liquor on 2644 North Highland.
You've heard discussion about the one mile versus two-mile radius. What's, my colleague has recommended that it be a one mile.
Yeah.
What's bad about it being a one mile rather than two-mile radius?
I think that basically, we don't want to see these territories destroyed to begin with, but if it has to be that way, we were asking that you give us... We don't want to see five or six liquor stores moved to a certain district. I don't think that's going to look good for the city. It's not going to look good for our investment, and I don't think we want to see a liquor store on every corner.
Okay, so you're saying that if you reduce it to one mile, the chances are that liquor stores will be on every corner?
I think you'll see more come to a certain district, most likely. Versus if it's a two-mile radius, there's a good chance that at least we'll be spread out. It won't be like Thompson Farms where you see six vapor stores down through that stretch.
Can you help too?
Are there any more questions for Mr. Davis? I think we don't want to get too, everybody up here on the table talking and having a conversation. Any more questions for Mr. Davis?
I do. I have one. Please. Mr. Davis, thank you so much for being here, and I hope that you've seen that we've really been trying hard. Wasn't the main concern to allow you all, and I believe there were two, to have enough time to recoup the value of your loan and investment?
Yeah, obviously, nobody wants to see these changes that's in my position in 2030. But if that has to be the case, then at least that gives us time to satisfy these notes that we have and these leases that we have. It's not going to make it perfect. It's still going to devalue our situation in 2030, which is not a good thing for someone who has spent several years trying to build their business, possibly retire one day. But if that's the way it has to be, then at least that gives us a chance.
My last question to ask you, among all the liquor store owners, to your knowledge, are there any owners who have a note that goes beyond 2030?
I would imagine that there's some that would extend past that a year or two. I'm two years into a 10-year note, and there were, I think, a couple of owners that came in right behind me, so they're probably in that nine-year range.
All right, thank you, sir.
Any more questions for Mr. Davis? Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you for being here.
Mr. Pylett, I think I have some questions for you also now. Can you describe what a two-mile radius is or...
Let me turn this map so it's pointing north.
Are you sure?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, this is Interstate 40 in the blue. This is the South Fork River is down here at the bottom. So basically, this area is all of Midtown. So basically, a two-mile radius is a large area. So, you know, if you apply that, this is not centered on any liquor store. Or it's just showing you what area a two-mile radius might take up. So right now, you have liquor stores in the central part of the town that would be all within this same radius. You know, so again, I'm not a proponent of any of, either one or what you're doing. I'm just trying to explain geographically what a two-mile radius looks like.
As a planner, and notwithstanding what the Code Committee put out, what's your position as a planner about the two-mile radius? what's your position as a planner about the two-mile radius? Would you recommend that or would you not recommend it or what?
Well, with a two-mile radius, uh, at least this is my opinion. You might as well have districts. You might as well leave it alone because, uh, you're going to basically make it to where the radius is, is so, so large that you really can't move. You're saying that you can, but basically when you find commercially zoned property where you can go and then try to find it to a new area, the radiuses are going to overlap. They're gonna, they're gonna basically exclude you from really moving. So, so if you're wanting to somehow protect what you've got to some extent, then basically the districts that you've got now and the way it's set up now do that. So again, these are my opinions. These are not, these are not in any way a proponent for one plan or another. I've just seen this, let's see, I've been here two hundred and something odd years, but.
Two hundred and thirty, two hundred and thirty.
Yeah, uh, so, um, I've seen this roll around at least three times, and it's, and it's always the same. It always comes back to the same point. It's by the time you start monkeying with the districts and trying to, or eliminate them or, or, or do other ways to adjust them, they all, you always roll back to the same plan because there's always wanting, you're always wanting to put some protective measure in there, and that already exists. So to me, it's always been a, an issue of either you free-market it or, or you leave it like it is because, uh, they're basically, anything else or any derivative of that is going to be similar in protecting one or not protecting another. So again, that's just my experience.
And my last question, I promise I won't have another one. If, if hypothetically, if there was a, um, we'll just say a coffee shop that was located in a particular place, a locally owned coffee shop, and then, uh, say Starbucks wanted to come in and, and put a, another coffee place there, could we as a council pass a resolution that would prohibit, uh, those Starbucks from coming in within a certain radius?
No, the only other use that I can think of that where you don't let free market reign is adult entertainment.
It's what?
Adult entertainment.
Advice.
And so again, uh, oh, in history, you know, basically red light districts have made, been made up of liquor stores and, and, and adult entertainments. But, so that's why they've always carried a kind of a stigma that you wanted to go beyond just free market and, and restrict them to a nature where you didn't have them everywhere. But sort, some of those notions have, have, uh, kind of changed over time, and some of them are still pretty strong. So again, that's the only other use that I can think of other than what zoning does where it basically separates incompatible land uses like industrial versus residential and, and those things. And even that mindset is somewhat changing, uh, as we move forward, so.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I have just one more thing. I want to make sure. Could I ask, uh, Attorney Louis Cobb to come up and?
Is Attorney Luna not enough?
She is, but sometimes Mr. Cobb.
Pop quiz time.
Pop quiz time.
He's been around a lot longer than I think.
One project Mr. Pilot and I worked on was, uh, there was a suggestion to have a exclusion zone for beer permits. Can y'all hear me?
Now we can.
That's better. Excl- uh, exclusion zones for new beer permits. And we had maps prepared with a, a two-hundred-foot radius, a three-hundred-foot, a five-hundred-feet. Do you remember that saying? And what you find is having radiuses eliminated almost every viable commercial location up the main arteries. The bypass was just covered. You couldn't get a beer permit anywhere on the bypass. Because you've got not just each other, but you've got, you're going to add schools, churches, and other things. And I think before you vote for a radius, it would be wise to consider what the map looks like. And Stan can do it in about thirty seconds. It's not hard. No, I'm kidding. It, it would take a while, but it's, uh, and, and there's another something that, um, I guess you would grandfather in the existing locations. But if one of, one in an existing location wanted to move within the old district, would they be excluded by the two-mile? Like there's one district that's got two that are, what, five blocks apart?
There's a little tiny.
Yeah.
District right there.
There are some, uh, there are some complications that won't become realized until you look at them and look at everything that's going on on the map. That's my, my thought.
Mr. Chairman, I move previous question. That we move forward with the vote.
Um, I still have one, one more thing. The only thing I'm, I am concerned.
We have a motion, we have, no ma'am, we have a motion on.
Okay.
Have a motion to call for questions. Is there a second?
I wish I would be doing the.
We're just calling for questions now for the, so we can, to vote on the motion. You have a second to call for questions?
Second.
You have a second, all right. All right, so, uh, council, please vote.
We're voting on the amendments.
We're voting on the call for questions. Yes.
You want, or you're asking if we still can ask a question?
This, yeah, this is the vote on the call for questions.
Okay.
Seven yes and two no.
All right. Now we move to the, the motion to amend from a two-mile radius to a one-mile radius, uh, beginning in two thousand thirty. Council, please vote.
Excuse me, this is for the.
Can you re-read?
This is for the, this is for the amendment to the original motion to remove, to limit, to reduce, I'm sorry, the two-mile radius to a one-mile radius in two thousand thirty. That's the, the amendment, the motion to amend the original motion.
Motion failed.
I'm sorry, with motion failed? Okay, all right. So now we're back to the original motion.
That's who it was saying.
Now, we, we can look at the record. We ask, they're back to the original motion now. Uh, any further discussion on the original motion? We have a motion and a second on that.
A second.
We already have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
It looks like it's six to three.
Seven, three.
Seven, seven to three.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Luna.
Seven to three.
Six to three, ma'am? Okay.
Well, as they say, just per the nation.
I did not vote, but. Item four is consideration of ordinance. Item four is consideration of ordinance to rezone property located west of Anglewood Drive from RS one single-family district, RS two single-family district comprising forty-one point eight-two-one acres more or less.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, this item was presented to the planning commission at their last meeting, and they are recommending approval of the rezoning to you.
Any questions from council? Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item five is consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located Ashport Road from RS two single-family district to RS two PRD, single-family planned residential development district comprising forty point two acres more or less.
Again, this item was presented to the planning commission at their last meeting, and they are recommending approval of this to you.
Motion.
You have a motion and a second?
Second.
Any further discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to, eight to one abstain.
Item seven, we were pushing item six next month. Item seven is consideration of an ordinance to close and abandon Elmer Street.
So moved.
You have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to second reading. Item one is proposed budget amendment, capital outlet fund, architectural engineering services, public safety complex amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is there?
Motion.
Second.
A motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote. Oh. So you want to answer the questions on the contract when we get to the contract, or you want to answer the question on the budget amendment? Okay. Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item two is proposed budget amendment, general fund for flock cameras in the amount of two hundred thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars.
So moved.
Richard?
Motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item three is proposed budget amendment, general fund, Boyd Foundation grant, amount of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Motion.
Second.
You have a motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item four is proposed budget amendment, capital outlet fund for NED air conditioning units in the amount of forty thousand dollars.
Motion.
A motion?
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item five is proposed budget amendment, general fund, JPD violent crimes grant in the amount of one million, nine hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars.
So moved.
You have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item six, proposed budget amendment, general fund, JPD burn jag grant in the amount of fifty thousand, fifty-one dollars.
Motion. Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item seven is proposed budget amendment, general fund, JPD voca grant in the amount of forty-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
Motion.
Second. A motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item eight is proposed budget amendment, general fund, JPD training grant in the amount of forty thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
A motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item nine is proposed budget amendment, general fund, JPD VVP grant in the amount of six thousand, six hundred dollars.
Motion. Second.
A motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
All right, you're involved in a new business. Item one is consideration of a resolution to limit truck traffic on Primrose Drive.
Motion.
Second.
You have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item two is consideration of a resolution to memorialize James L. Couples by designating Wright Industrial Cove as James L. Couples Cove.
So moved. Second.
A motion is second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, who was James Couples?
James Couples is the, uh, founder.
He started.
Founder of Couples J and J, uh, developed that entire area around Wright Industrial Cove, Whitehall. Entrepreneur, and there's a resolution in there that discusses all his contributions to the area and to the city.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item three, consideration of a street acceptance request for Baptist Memorial Healthcare Corporation.
Motion. Second.
A motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item four is consideration of a street acceptance request for Shepherd's Field, section twelve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to one abstain.
Item five is consideration of a street acceptance request for Walnut Trace North, section eighteen A.
So moved.
Second.
A motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed to eight to one abstain.
Item six, consideration of a street acceptance request for Walnut Trace North, section eighteen B.
So moved.
You have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed seven to two abstain.
Item seven is consideration of a street acceptance request for Walnut Trace North, section nineteen.
So moved.
You have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to one abstain.
Item eight is consideration of a street acceptance request for Windstone, section six A and seven A.
So moved.
You have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to one abstain.
All right. Item nine is consideration of a contract for architectural and engineering services for the public safety complex.
Motion.
You have a motion? A second. And we have some discussions. Ask, uh, Chiefs Corley and Frittle.
Hey, good morning. Just real quick, uh, what I passed out a few minutes ago, that's the full contract. I'd heard from, uh, a couple of you that may have been misplaced in there, but it's all right there. So together we formed the committee to build a new public safety complex.
I know you have some council members who have questions.
Yeah, I'd just like, I'd just like, uh, Chief, for someone to go over the procedure behind this request.
The procedure for?
For the.
Attaining the agreement?
Non-bid project.
The non-bid. Okay, so, uh, a, a contract like this is a professional service, is deemed a professional service. Uh, and by statute, uh, and that's TCA twelve four one oh six, if you need to look at it. But, uh, by statute, professional services contracts do not have to be bid out because of the expertise involved.
And so how many companies did you all interview or get requests from or whatever?
We just spoke with the one.
So we just, with one?
Yes.
And that was because of the?
That's because, uh, this particular architectural firm has designed, uh, probably five or six public safety buildings in middle Tennessee over the last five to ten years. That, they're, they're the subject matter expert in the area.
And councilman, if I may, uh, I know Chief Corley, back, even when he was a major Corley, we were working on this, and he's gone to many conferences and visited many police stations, and their team over there decided that these were the subject matter experts, and I agree.
Any other questions?
No, that, that's the purpose of the law is to, to get the.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. All right. Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
All right.
Thank you.
Item ten, thank you. Item ten is a consideration of guaranteed maximum price proposal for the senior activity center.
Motion.
A motion is second? Any discussion?
Yes.
I think Ms. Virginia should be able to come up to.
We all love this project, but if, if I looked at it correctly, uh, we were talking about three hundred dollars a square foot, not counting land or site preparation. And I talked to. Yeah, good, good. I've been trying to get him before. He can put, he can answer this better than I can, but he mentioned one thing, we're having difficulty getting bids.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
There, there are a few factors, I think, relative to bidder participation. First of all, I think Jimmy sent out, uh, about a hundred and thirty requests for, for bids. Companies in this area, actually all the way to, uh, to Fort Lauderdale, Florida, in the southern direction, Atlanta and Nashville, just all over. Uh, we cup, covered as many quality builders, potential quality builders, bidders as we, as we are aware of. We ended up getting about thirty contractors, a little over thirty contractors that, that did submit bids. The market conditions here with Blue Oval and several other large projects that are going on, affect the bidders because all the major contractors, subcontractors, suppliers, uh, have their plate loaded. So I think that's a major factor. Now, we did bid the project over the holiday weekend, uh, period. I think that it, that affected the participation some also. But, but again, we really had to get, we had to go ahead and.
Period of analysis of half a billion dollar construction, two hundred million dollar construction, five point six billion dollar construction, two point five.
Yeah. So, but again, the three hundred and four or so dollar a square foot is about where we are. Just for comparison purposes, uh, the new school that we're managing also, Pope, is, is, is right at that number. And proportionally, usually the smaller the project, the higher the per-square foot cost. So I really feel like we, we have reasonable, reasonably priced the project.
So additional time will not do any good as far as trying to get anything to get.
I mean, I think it could hurt, uh, potentially. Again, the folks, I, I think if you go to rebid, some of the folks that were successful bidders just around might not rebid. So, you know, I, I feel like it could potentially hurt us. So I, I really, bottom line is, I really don't think we have a bad price for the project in today's market.
I, I don't, well, let me. Why would this price per square feet, uh, foot rather be more than a residential?
Well, there, there are code issues. Uh, uh, I think there are quality, not quality, but, uh, qualification issues between the subcontractors that will work on this type of project versus who works on a home. They're different, different. They're not as many, for residential contractors, not as many requirements relative to bonding, licensing, all those things that add cost and overhead to.
Gets back to bidding situation again.
Right.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to one abstain.
Thank you. Item eleven is consideration of a contract with Kimley Horn for the storm water master plan and conditions assessment. Motion. We have a motion is second? Any discussion?
Me again.
Awesome. Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, okay, this project goes back to what we're working on in the Beavis. Uh, okay, this project goes back to what we're working on in the Beavis, um, uh, area. Is that Beavis area part of the Anderson, what basin? Anderson branch?
Uh, trying to think, I was trying to remember back to it.
Stan's indicating it's not.
No, it's not.
It's, it's not?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Hank Creek is where it gets.
Okay, so what's been done in, in Beavis, in that area, Kane Creek area so far? Have, have we got the analysis done or is construction done? What's been done so far?
The analysis?
I'm, I'm asking, period, what's been done in that area?
I'm uncertain, that's all prior to me coming onto the seat.
Okay.
Are you asking a question specific to the assessment project?
Yeah, I was, where the, where the overlap is here, because this, this, this is tying into that, I would, I would.
This is an assessment of the overall, e- everything located within inside the city, like, just.
Including the Be, including Kane Court?
Including it all. Now, the first area is the pilot areas, and we haven't got those back yet, the rest of it's the, the rest of the city, or the TDEC grants, we had to do a different contract because it, we're using different dollars.
Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
Did I cut you off?
No, no, that, please, go ahead.
Uh, something to, to remind other council members is that the TDEC grant that we have, uh, it's very generous, I believe, somewhere in the neighborhood of ninety-ten or around the ten. Uh, it is affording us a tremendous opportunity to do this comprehensive assessment and really be able to plan our future for the sake of our stormwater infrastructure. And this is something that time is of the essence. If we do not expend the TDEC grant funds within a certain period of time, then we have to pay everything back. It would be very costly if we were unable to find a way to proceed smoothly with everything.
I concur.
So, so right now, on, on the, the nine point six million we're talking about, we'll be doing assessment of all the property, public property, no private property at all, we'd be involved because we do not do work on private property, and we don't roll up in that can of worms.
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay, yeah. This, if I read it correctly, has no design work in it.
Right.
It will present data to, and I'm, I'm quoting you, and you can tell me right, but you feel very comfortable that with the data they give us, we will not have to have any outside design work to do these projects that our in-house can do it.
Well, our in-house can design it, we, we might not be able to do.
Yeah, my design is what is on this, so you feel comfortable with that?
Absolutely.
Okay. The only other question I have is, is I have a problem that we have not bid this out. And understand that, that it's professional contract, just like we did on the, uh, safety building and all, it's very legal and all, but nine or ten million dollars just seems like needs to be bid out. Comment or question?
Thanks for your opinion.
Well, it, 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 okay, my opinion is it does, do you agree to that?
Do I agree to it?
Okay, okay.
Mr. Chairman.
That's, that's an unfair question for a staff.
I, I take it back, okay.
Mr. Chairman, for clarification, um, someone can correct me if I'm wrong, Zach, but we did bid out these services on the very front end?
The, the services itself was done through RFQ, that's correct.
So, so this is.
This is like a, like a.
You, you, we bid out the first services?
For, for the RFQ, yes.
Explain to people that know what RF, that is versus.
Request for qualifications.
Yeah, that's just.
That's correct.
That is not a quote bid only contract.
Request for qualifications falls in the line of stuff that's professional services, items that can't be evaluated purely, uh, by price. It's more criteria of skill set, uh.
Capacity.
Capacity, project similar size, yes.
But it is not a bid.
It is a bid process. Purely for qualifications.
It's not a cost bid.
It's not a cost bid, that's correct, yeah.
You have, you have a limited number of contractors who can even sniff this type of service, and what this is, is more so a continuation of what we had put together months back to enact our ability to ex, to expend the TDEC funds to get the study going.
Correct.
Sounds very good, we request for qualifications, and, and, and it's something of this magnitude, we go to base it on price and get someone who may not be qualified to do it, and then when the price goes up, so you get someone best on the qualifications to do the service and to do the work. And so these two firms, Kimley Horn is the contract for us for the TDEC grant, but they're also subbing with Grisham Smith, who performed the work in the beginning as well, too. So it's two firms working through it, which had, for the TDEC purpose, we have to contract, we have to have one contract.
I understand, I, I just, like, my, my, my opinion is.
Second.
We shouldn't have ten million dollars.
We have a call for questions? Have a second? Counsel, vote.
Motion passed eight to one, no.
All right. Back to the motion, counsel, please vote.
Motion passed eight to one abstain.
All right, thank you. Item twelve is consideration of extension to the men's homeless shelter consultant agreement.
So moved.
Have a motion, second? Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item thirteen. Is consideration of professional services agreement with TLM for proposed two thousand twenty-three CDBG grant application.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second? Further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed. Motion passed nine to zero.
Item fourteen is consideration of a resolution to submit applications for FY twenty twenty-three small cities block grant CDBG childcare creation grant. We have Ms. Lauren Kirk here, ask any questions? Answer any questions? Now, Ms. Lauren.
Good morning.
Good morning. Things that, uh, Ms. Parker brought, can you, can you kind of give us some details on what she was discussing?
So, I, I think, listen, we're not going to go on specifics, let's give it, let's give it account of the process, the rubric created, and the evaluation process.
Sure. So this is a unique grant situation for us. We were approached by ECD. These grant dollars are carryover from the past where they had leftover monies, and they said, City of Jackson, if you'd like to apply, please apply. So we had a crunched timeline than what we would normally have. Um, so when we found out about this project, met with Melissa Davis, who is the grant writer for Southwest, who submits the grant on behalf of the city. I also invited in Olivia Abernathy, because she is the childcare expert, in my opinion, for our region. She's a Bright Start Fellow for, uh, the State of Tennessee for the western region, which means she oversees our strategic plan related to childcare. So we were actually initially approached by the new hub club project with an unsolicited proposal in the summer, and was responded to, said that we would create a process to ensure that all childcare providers had an opportunity to, to apply for this grant opportunity. Decided to develop an RFP process, which was not required by the grant, but we felt like would be best for, again, equal opportunity and for us to evaluate eligibility of projects, because the grant only required we have a public hearing, and we could have just selected any project from the public hearing, move forward with it. So we, um, set a RFP process, um, set a public hearing for later in October, and this was all with the timeline from the state that had been communicated to us, that the applications were due at the end of December. We got notification from the state in early October that they wanted to know the projects we were moving forward with by October thirtieth, thirty-first, um, which was after we'd already had the public hearing set, so we could not make any changes to that. So unfortunately, our providers only had a week turnaround time from the public hearing to submit RFP documents. That was all set by the state. So, um, I sent out notice to the list of all Madison County childcare providers that was provided by the state, and they got notice of the public hearing with the RFP. After the public hearing, anybody who showed up to the public hearing that was not already on that list receives the RFP. RFP submissions were sent in the thirtieth, were evaluated by a review committee from the Jackson Madison County Children's Cabinet, which is led by both mayors, the superintendent, and has subject matter experts on that cabinet. These were all volunteers who, again, are subject matter experts. They were reviewed fairly, the scoring rubrics were provided to the applicants the day that they were approved. Um, I don't know if this answers all your questions, Mayor, but I think I've been pretty thorough.
How many childcare centers applied?
Twelve, I may, let me, let me double check.
Now, the ones that applied, the committee that you mentioned are the ones, is the one that, uh, selected the two winners?
Yes, sir, there's twelve, and there were two that were selected to move forward. That was based on the funding request and capacity that we felt to handle multiple applications.
Is there a timeline on, 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 uh, when we would have to approve the, uh, the, uh, resolution?
Yes, today, because we have to submit application by the end of this month.
So it was not, you're saying so if it's not approved today, then we lose it?
Yes, sir, we lose this all, our community, our community loses the opportunity to get this essential funding.
All right, the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars we're talking about, is that, how is that going to be disbursed? Divided among those two centers or what?
Yes, sir. Um, ECD notified us after the fact that we could submit more than one application. We were under the impression that we could only submit one initially, uh, going to have all of that documentation, but YMCA has applied for the maximum amount that can be awarded, which is five hundred thousand. We believe that what they, based on what they've requested, that, that, that will, what they're actually, they're going to have to actually put in private dollars, too, to, to fund more, so they're going to have to match over that, and then Hands Up requests were a little bit lower for three hundred and fifty thousand. The contract that y'all just approved with TLM will go in, they, they will go in and verify these cost estimates in the final application that Melissa will submit later this month.
Okay, the YMCA daycare center, that's the one that's on Campbell?
It's on Conrad.
On where?
Conrad.
Tell me where Conrad is.
Bowl movie theater next to the Bobass, that road leading to it.
All right.
For the therapy and learning center.
Yeah, I, I know what you're talking about, um, Ms. Kirk, as you know, I represent, uh, District Three, which is pretty much on the east side of town. And I went yesterday to look and see where Hands Up was, and it's on Green Hill or Greenfield, and now I know where, uh, Conrad is. Uh, did any daycare centers from the east side of town apply?
I would have to look at the addresses, but we did have, we had daycare centers throughout the city, like, I know there was one downtown, um. I think that there would be one in the east side, um, again, I would have to check the addresses.
Okay. And you've heard what, uh, the lady came up early and presented this letter and, and everything, uh, that I have just gotten today, and what it was, so therefore I wouldn't know anything about, uh, the things that are said in here. The, uh, you, I hear you telling me, though, that if the council does not, uh, uh, pass a resolution today, the city loses all the money.
Yes, sir.
That's what you're telling me?
Yes, sir.
And you're also saying, irrespective of what the late Ms., uh, Blue Parker, I'm sorry, Ms. Blue, Ms. Parker. Uh, the things that she said, presented in the letter, have you read what she said?
No, sir, I have not, I have not received a letter.
Okay. But you, you say that it was a fair process?
Yes, sir. I sympathize with our providers that it was accelerated, because we were given, um, in my opinion, rushed deadlines by the state when we were told the end of the year and then told at the end of October. But it was as fair a process as we could have instituted, and I have all of the documentation to ensure that.
Okay, and last question, was there any consideration, because it appears to me it may not have been any, but was there any consideration put in the thought of selecting the, the, uh, winners here? Uh, looking at the geographic aspect of it, that, you know, nothing on the east side, everything is over here on, on the, on the west side. Was there a consideration made on that, about the geographics of it all? Because, you know, these people who would take advantage of this, if they live on the east side, they gotta drive all the way to the west side to drop the kids off, come back to get them from the west side, to go back home, et cetera. Was there any consideration done about that?
No, sir, it was not focused on geographic, it was focused on, um, organizational history, capacity, serving low to moderate income families, which, as you know, similar to schools, sometimes does mean the immediate radius and sometimes does mean people commute over. But both of these facilities do serve low to moderate income families.
Okay, I promise again, this is my last question. I looked on the Hands Up website, because I'd never heard of it before, and it says that what they do is serve low to income disadvantaged persons. Uh, but the tuition is almost a thousand dollars a month. One of them was eight hundred a month, and the other one was six something a month. Uh, and I'm trying to figure out how that helps low income individuals. Have you discussed that with them at all?
I am going to admit that I'm not a subject matter expert on this, and some of you may have children in childcare, know that it's probably around two hundred dollars a week, which I would guess adds up to eight hundred thousand dollars a month. I will say, from what I've learned through this process, most of those families, the state covers that cost.
That's correct.
Whether it's through Families First or, or, um, other programs, so they're actually not, they're not paying that tuition themselves, it's all covered by the state.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Lawrence had, had his hand up second.
Is there any way that this can be mended? If we pass it today, is there any way it could be amended later on to include some other?
I, I would, just causing the council on, on mending this, because this is not the last opportunity we'll have for childcare grants. Uh, so this is a start, you know, I think we, sometimes we get to, we think that these are the only opportunities that we'll ever have, but, uh, this is a start. Uh, Mayor Massey and I have been in conversations with New Industry, talking about providing opportunities for childcare, and so this is a start to expand what we have as a childcare desert in West Tennessee. And so we're working diligently to provide those additional options, this is just one piece of a much larger puzzle.
Yes, sir, I, I would also provide clarification, the resolution is, you're essentially giving us the green light to proceed with the application, right? So we don't have the application finished today, Melissa Davis is working on it. The reason why we're getting TLM involved is to verify those cost estimates, so, again, the, the full final application that's due at the end of the month will come back. As the mayor said, ECD has told us that they anticipate, they have not guaranteed, but they anticipate future funding opportunities, because childcare has become a workforce issue, and that's why it's coming out of ECD instead of DCS at this time.
So I'm a little confused, are we saying there's a chance that some other agencies could be put on this before the final approval?
No, sir. Not this application, but in the future.
But we hope to get some more grants further down the line.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Wallace?
Thank you, sir. Ms. Jasmine is here, and I've served on Hands Up board just until recently, and she's here and could answer his questions real quickly about the price and who it's served.
All right.
Pay twenty-four hundred dollars a month for childcare, so eight hundred thousand makes me feel happy.
Hey, state your name and who you're with, even though we just heard it, but.
Uh, my name is Jasmine Pearman, I'm the director of Hands Up Preschool. Um, so we have, we accept all of the government assistance DHS certificates, and we also do scholarships. Um, so the parents, they come in, they apply, if their income isn't where it needs to be, then they can get a scholarship as well as, um, the DHS certificate.
And this money will be used, you say it will be split, it will, how will it be used?
This is a capital improvement grant, so it allows both facilities to provide renovations to serve more families. In the case of Hands Up, they will be, um, moving to serving infants, if I'm correct on that, so right now they just serve.
Three and four year olds.
Three and four year olds. So that, but it's, does not cover any operating costs for either facility, it's simply for the buildings themselves to be able to add more slots and serve more families.
All right. And again, this is the last opportunity, if we don't pass this today, the money will be, is gone.
Yes, sir, we will not be able to pursue this specific grant opportunity.
And you said that no other daycare centers can be included in here?
No, sir, we felt like we had a thorough process and felt like these were the best applica, or applicants to move forward with, based on the eligibility, based on the needs of our community.
All right. I'm, 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 let me finish, I'm going to vote, you know, in favor of this, uh, but I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about the, the statements that were made by Ms., Ms., uh, Parker. And as I said, I haven't had opportunity to look at it, but I would like, in any kind of future endeavors, uh, that the east side of Jackson be included in everything.
Yes, sir.
You know, uh, because the geogra, geography of Jackson should be considered in these type, types of grants. And so, uh, just urge that be done on, on this and as well as other items as well, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
Move the approval? We have a motion?
Second, I'd like to ask another question, who was on the selection committee?
The selection committee consisted of, um, Ms. Tereka Smith, Sabrina Anderson, Jerry Moore, Catherine Cawthorn, and Hannah Snowden. Um, I can list off the agencies that they represent, unless y'all already know all of them, okay.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed eight to one abstain.
Thank you.
All right, item fifteen is consideration of a resolution to support the Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development Broadband Connected Community Facilities Grant. Yeah, I was looking for a motion, make, got a motion?
Motion.
Got a second? Second? Any discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
But we thank you.
Item sixteen is consideration of committee and board appointments, Jackson Community Redevelopment Agency, reappointment of Monte Jones.
Motion.
Second. Motion seconds? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed eight to one abstain.
Item seventeen is budget amendments less than ten thousand, those were sunshine to you all, and item eighteen, called up now, consideration of invoices over ten thousand.
So moved.
Motion? Motion is second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Before we adjourn, I wanted to take an opportunity to recognize our recreation park staff, our groundskeeper, our maintenance, um, public works. um, public works, um, on a phenomenal Christmas parade, tree lighting last night. And then Amy Mallet also, she's in here for, uh, tree lighting ceremony. I think best one yet, so, uh, y'all have raised the standard.
Mr. Mayor, before you go, I wanted to point out one thing on that resolution about the childcare grant. Uh, the last, the last sentence that you have Harden County in here, we didn't mean that, did we?
It's a template provided by the-
Okay, sorry. I just wanted to point that out. We need to change that.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor. Further business means adjourn.
Thank you.